And if he comes on, that will be all right, yeah. All right, I'd like to call the holder of the Planning Commission Work Session for May 15th. Please stand is Commissioner Doris, we'll lead this in our invocation, and Commissioner Cruz in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we just come to you thanking you tonight, Lord, and asking that you give us a special blessing tonight at this meeting. God direct us to make decisions and do the right things for our county. We ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. It brings us to establish a form. We have seven of eight, so we do have a form. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Last Tuesday, an agenda was posted prior to this meeting, and today there were some changes that needed to be made to include a presentation by CRC for the upcoming Comp Plan Workshop for the, that will be open to the community in June, so I have added CRC to the agenda. That is the only change, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good.
Don't move with the change.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All favor raise your right hand. That passes, all right. That will move us to the Comprehensive Plan, and, okay, I see Todd is here, so Todd, we're going to turn the floor over to you.
Very good. Good evening, everybody. Hope you can hear me through the mic. What we want to do tonight, I don't expect this to take very long, we want to go over the logistics, what we are proposing to present, and also kind of nail down a date and time and location. I see that Jamie and Nikki have some documents up on the screen, and we also brought some other documents. I want to kind of give you a couple of examples of what we have done with past Comp Plans. What you see on your screen is what we've done most recently with Charlotte County. Basically, there are two components to the, well, actually, three. One's just a brief slide presentation by CRC staff to just be sure everyone knows what we're doing and why, but then we have two different exercises, and what we like to do is break the, every, the attendees up into groups. And we've done it two different ways in the past. What you see on the, what's on the screens, what we did for Charlotte County, it's an identifying issues exercise, and then the second exercise is a mapping exercise, and what we do is we break, break the room up into two groups.
Thank you.
One group will do the identifying issues, the other group will do the mapping, and then after about 20 minutes, we'll switch, and then we'll come back and, and present our findings to, to the group at the end. The whole meeting, we expect to last about an hour to an hour and a half, depending on how much discussion there is. The, the other alternative, which Lauren just passed out to you, is something called a park exercise. We've done this before, and actually, we did it with Buckingham before. So, I want to get the, and I'll just give you guys a, a second to look those over and see what your preference is. The differences are fairly minor. With the park exercises, preserve, add, remove, and keep out. If you were, if you were here the last time we helped update the Comp Plan, you're familiar with that exercise. The identifying issues exercise is more of identifying the county's strengths, challenges, and what you would like local news headlines to say about the county, say, 10 years from now. So that's really the difference between the two examples. Regardless of whichever exercise we do for issues, we're, that we still plan to do a mapping exercise where we would have a large copy.
Which actually, it's on your.
It's in your packet.
It's on your board page in your packet that we just passed out, the Buckingham County Future Land Use.
Right, and that's, that's from the 2015 Comp Plan, and basically, you would just have markers and have, and have, have the map marked up based on your input. So that's what, that's what we have in mind. I'd like to hear what the commission has to say, what their thoughts are.
I guess my question would be, what's the, is there any better response from the citizens on either of these avenues?
Well, we, we found with, with Charlotte County in particular, and also with Nottaway County, the identifying issues exercise worked pretty well. And I will tell you that our intent is to take the, the feedback we get during the public meeting, and that's going to guide us when we draft the citizen surveys, for what that's worth.
Any comments from the planning commissioners on the two approaches?
I think the park one seems kind of more simple to me, but I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Todd, you, you are planning on having, if I recall, two community meetings?
Actually, I think we're just doing one, right?
Just one?
Just one, yeah.
That was what was on that tentative schedule.
Okay, just one. I couldn't recall. I was also, hit the middle grounds, they do one of one meeting and one of the other.
Go back to the first, the, the first, not the park.
Identifying issues.
For, yes, okay. Want to read that, thank you.
Think it would be good if we could distribute the park exercise information as maybe a guide for people to organize their thoughts before going into the identifying issues exercise. I just think that helps people figure out what it is that they find to be the strengths and the challenges.
And a combination of two of them.
I had to fill out one. I would want to do the park. That's, I agree with you.
I'd, I'd agree, it's a little easier, simpler.
It's, oh, yeah.
Is that agreement among the commissioners just to do a hybrid? Is that what you just have to decide, or do you want to just stick with the park? How do, how do you feel? I might have misunderstood the comment.
Maybe if we stick with the park, maybe between CRC and the Planning Commission, we can try to take the input and use the identifying issues more as a commission tool than a public tool.
Is everybody in agreement with that, commissioner? All right.
Park exercise.
We'll do the park, and then we'll work on the other questionnaire with, in a joint
All right, so if we're good on that, and then the mapping exercise will be the other component of the community meeting. So the other thing we need to talk about tonight is location, which I'm guessing is going to be the community center at, what used to be the.
The Dillon Primary.
Thank you.
Former.
And we need to settle on a date and time. So what we're looking at, as far as time, is sometime in June. I understand the 12th is Buckingham Board Meeting, which is out, and then the 19th is Juneteenth, so there's a question of whether the group wants to, to have a meeting on that day.
Conflict came June 19th would be your work session with the holiday. It's moved to June 20th, and CRC has a conflict on the 20th, which our conversations in the last day or so, we've taken a look at the calendar, so the week prior, June 14th or 15th, or June 21st, or June 22nd.
Right, is there, let me ask, do y'all have a preference of either, either of those dates here a week apart there?
It's really at the Planning Commission's discretion. We don't have any, any conflicts with any of those dates.
Okay.
When you're speaking of the 22nd, are you talking at what time?
Well, that's the other thing we need to settle is the time, so that, that's something else the group needs to discuss.
I think originally, it was about 6:00 PM, but I'm not, you know, if you think of a different time, definitely discuss that, too.
I would think you would probably get a better response if you had it after working hours.
Yeah, we're definitely going to do it in the evening. When, when we say 6:00 PM, our concern is that if we, it's like if we have it at 7:00 or 7:30, you might have people going home to eat dinner and not wanting to go back out.
Right.
22nd is out for me.
22nd, okay.
It's out for me.
Okay.
A bunch of other people.
Okay.
We definitely regret our NAACP meeting.
Okay.
That would be a conflict, a very conflict, and that'd be significant.
22nd is out.
So, look at the 14th, the 15th, or the 21st. Unfortunately, I may or may not have Nottaway County Planning Commission on the 20th, so I can't commit to the 20th.
14th?
14th.
How's that for the commissioners, 14th, all right? That's a Wednesday.
There's still four weeks out. That gives us enough time as the county and admin staff to advertise appropriately, just to make sure that.
Right.
Correct publications for community awareness.
Okay.
Is anyone aware of any other community groups that could be negative impacted, negatively impacted by the 14th? Of course, George brought up a very valid concern with another meeting that we would like for as much of the community and the citizen base as possible.
Anybody know of any other meetings that would conflict with the 14th?
Except that is usually Bible study.
That's a very important day, you know that, right?
That's what I'm saying, and, and I would have to say, again, you know, that's much I would have to choose between coming here and going to Bible study. I don't know what other churches are, but that's traditionally Bible study night.
Right. How about, is Thursday the 15th, is that reasonable?
I sleep at night.
You're fine with the 15th? How's, how about all, all the commissioners, 15th?
I'm good.
All right, looks like the 15th today. What is the longevity of the meeting you want? How long do you like to have it, Todd?
We, we're envisioning this lasting an hour, maybe an hour and a half, depending on how much discussion there is.
Okay. Would it be reasonable to start at 5:00 and assume you maybe wrap it up by 6:30?
I mean, that's really up to the group. I mean, if you think people can be here by 5:00. I mean, I can be here because I can leave the office early for this. This is work-related, but.
Right.
Other people, they have jobs, they, they, they may or may not. That's, that's something the group needs to decide.
It is a little early for some, I do know that, of traveling. Any suggestions, you think, 6:00 to 7:30?
6:00, yeah, the normal meeting for us, yeah.
All right, let's go for 6:00 and.
June 15th, 6:00 PM?
Well, we'll do, like Nikki said, they're, they're going to get an advertisement ready for the paper. We'll get a community calendar announcement to go in the Farm Bill Herald, and we also, you may have noticed in the packet Laura passed out, Lauren passed out a flyer we're going to work up, and we're going to coordinate with the county in getting the flyer distributed. If any, if anyone has any suggestions for where to distribute the flyer, please let us know. We'll, we'll work on that.
The only other thing that I may, I didn't, I did not have a date to work with Wendy Spivey, who coordinates all the activities for the community center, so if there is a conflict, would it be okay to use June 14th at 6:00 PM? That would only be our backup plan in case there is a conflict. Other than that, I will move forward with reserving the room for June 15th.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Not the building next door, but the one next to that where Department of Forestry is or used to be?
Ag Center.
Is that still available if, if, as a fallback, if the.
It's still available. I feel the community center, this is only my feeling, and maybe I shouldn't put my feeling in it. The community center is a bit more centrally located, it's a larger area, some of our supplies and equipment that are so easily used for the citizens to access that informational room, it's very conducive to a conversational area with different stations set up so that individuals feel more inclined to ask questions and actually be involved in the session. But we can take as a further conflict, conflict, if either of those dates of the community center aren't available, we can move it to the agricultural center. How about that? So the 14th or 15th?
That's, that's up to the group. I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
It is an option, but I do agree with Nikki. I think the community centers are a lot better, more room, and more central, as he says, centrally located. When would you be able to verify for the meeting, Nikki, how soon?
I would know tomorrow. I was actually going to send an email tonight.
Well, if it doesn't work out, then we can, we'll just have to.
Scramble tomorrow to make something work.
For now, then we'll go with this plan.
Well, that's all we have, so if anybody else has anything they would like to discuss, we can wrap up and you can move on to your next order of business.
Okay. Todd, would you have an idea how soon you'll have the flowers and all to the county?
We can have them done in the next couple of days.
Oh, great, okay. Well, if you would, just make sure Nikki's got them, and then Nikki can let us know, and we'll try to get some distributed as soon as possible.
Okay, absolutely.
Very good.
Before they, I close that session with them, does any commissioners have any questions for, at this time? Is any other changes y'all have already made or thought we were making to the Comp Plan?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We, we kind of wanted to, to, to hear from the, the public before we got too far into it. I will tell you, the first three sections of the plan are really going to be more data[1200.92][1200.92]intensive, so we can hopefully in the not-too-distant future get started on those, but as far, really, the, the public input comes into play when you get into your land use plan, and your goals, objectives, and strategies, and your special policy areas. So, I, I, I'll be curious to see what, what we hear, what we see when we get to, from, hear from the public.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, thank you, folks.
I'll have safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us to discussions on the, from Mr. Wright on our ordinance trying to address the mining. Mr. Wright, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
As long as we don't turn the floor upside down, we all right, don't we? I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. What I have to say is sort of like watching paint dry. It's not going to be particularly exciting, and so we will go through it. I decided when I was going to do this that I would try to step back and take an overview so the legal part of it would make some sense, as we talked about the various parts of the gold mining discussion, as I've chosen to call it. I had a teacher, when I used to do some things in school, they say whenever you do a public speaking, you're supposed to tell people what you're going to say, and then you say it, and then you tell them what you said. So, to give you a little idea of where we're going, that first slide really sort of deals with a overview of what we hope to talk about tonight. I want to sort of give you a brief, and it's interesting that the Comprehensive Plan is now back in front of you, because part of this discussion really relates to the zoning ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan, and we'll spend a little time talking about the current status of that. Spend just a very few minutes talking about what's changed, why are we really having this discussion, and then we'll spend a little time on what I perceive that you've heard, the positions of the various people in the community, and the arguments in support of that, and what the state can do, what the county can do, the timing factors, decisions that I see that you might have to make, and you might see those differently, and then if we have time and you're so inclined, I'll try to deal with any questions you might have. So that's sort of what we're going to try to do tonight, and I don't want to waste anybody's time, but I will try to be brief, and there's a whole lot of words in here, so I won't spend a, I will try not to read to you. I hate people that you put something up and then they read it to you. I think y'all are pretty capable of doing that. All right, as you know, we have a zoning ordinance. I don't know whether you've ever taken a note and taken a look at it or not, but the authority in the ordinance itself to adopt that comes from the state. The authority is granted to the local bodies by the General Assembly in Section 15.2-2280. If you remember, that was a hot topic, 52, 15.2-2280. Any locality that has a zoning ordinance relied on that section to adopt it. State gives you four things that you can do, and those are the four listed. The one that probably we're talking about right now, that the, grants the authority to regulate, restrict, permit, prohibit, and determining the following, the excavation or mining of soils or other natural resources. So when you look for your authority to do anything that we're going to talk about, that's, you're going to find some of it right there, and that's probably going to be the biggest spots you're going to find. The current zoning status that relate to mining, in the A1 District, mining can take place with a special use permit. It says mining and quarrying with federal and or state license. So currently, a person could come in and apply for a mining permit or a zoning special use permit. Before they could begin operation, if you say you gave them that special use permit with whatever conditions you might impose, somewhere before they can start operation, they're going to have to have whatever other approval, state or federal, it requires, and the state is generally the one who permits mining in this Commonwealth. In District 5, again, a special use permit for quarry, for mining. In District 6, which is the heavy industrial section, EM 2, that quarrying and mining is a permitted use. So you can do that, they can open a mine if they get the state and federal permits without having to come to ask the board for anything. I don't know whether you've ever seen, and that's not a very good picture of it, but that is the official zoning map from Buckingham County as provided to me. What you see basically in green is A1, okay? And if you look up in the northern end of the county, I think the, let's see, we make that a little bit better. M1 is blue, and M2 is a checket, you, and if you're familiar with the county, you know where the slate quarries are, and you know where conite, and those are the areas that would be really related to M2. So, the zoning ordinance in Buckingham County, relationship to the Comprehensive Plan is absolutely crucial. In the zoning ordinance districts with a reasonable consideration of the Comprehensive Plan, it is stated and expressed the purpose of the zoning ordinance to create land use regulations, to encourage the realization and implementation of the Comprehensive Plan. To this end, you go through those things that you can see there, to promote efficient and cost-effective use of the land, to be situated so as to make possible future economies of the provision of services by public and private sectors, and to be located as to protect water shares, protect services, groundwater, discourage development, floodplains, wetlands, and conservation areas. The Comprehensive Plan is your roadmap. The ordinance come in place to make that happen, and those of you who probably attended those classes recently heard, have heard a lot talk about the Comprehensive Plan and how that fits into your scheme. In Buckingham's Comprehensive Plan currently, right now, I've picked out just a few, just to give you an idea, that the Comprehensive Plan that you currently have in place sort of supports status quo, okay, of what you've got in there, in terms of allowing your zoning ordinance to match up with that. And on page 47, economic activity within Buckingham County is the foundation upon which the county was built. The building blocks of this foundation include agricultural, forestry, manufacturing, including processing, retail, and wholesale trade and services. Manufacturing, actually, that's where your mining come in, is defined in your Comprehensive Plan. Much of the manufacturing in Buckingham County involves some form of mining, conite and slate are the predominant minerals, so you play tribute in your Comprehensive Plan that those are a vital part of this county as it exists. Goes on to talk about what conite is, what the slate company is, James River Slate Company, and if those of you familiar with the county know, the landscape has changed some in regard to some of those items, and so light, which doesn't even exist in the county anymore, was very prevalent in the county in 2015. Community resources. It identifies mineral resources as Buckingham, in Buckingham County, and describes those and says, that's part of what we've got here, and that's part of what we need to consider in the Comprehensive Plan. Do we want to allow in the development of those? Do we want to close that development? How do we want to go about that? That map is included, I don't expect it to mean anything to you other than they've been identified. And actually, there's a little tweak. If you go to the study that was performed by the state, that map's tweaked a little bit in terms of where the gold resources and those types of things. Buckingham County's land use plan, which probably is, there are areas where mining or industrial activities are occurring and could expand into adjacent areas of its present location. Comprehensive Plan, as you now have it, envisions that mining operations in Buckingham more than likely or could expand, and talks about the way that you should approach that expansion. And the, the numbers below are the representative of where the content, where this is found in the Comprehensive Plan. My disclaimer, not a complete statement. Don't mean this to be a comprehensive overview of the Comprehensive Plan. I've just saw a few snapshots, shots of some of the references to mining in the Comprehensive Plan, presented only to affirm the connection between the Comprehensive Plan and the ordinance of the county, primarily zoning and the subdivision ordinance. All right, so we've got that, what we have now. Sorry, I have a tendency to crowd, walk away from the mic, it's an old. It's an old habit, and I apologize. I'm not good staying in the same spot. So what's really changed to bring about this discussion? Aston Bay is the driving force that's really caused this discussion. They've done prospect, prospecting. They continue to have discussion about prospecting in the county and the potential for mining. That's the biggest driver of what, why we're here talking about this. Then the General Assembly study came, and then the community dialogue. So that, that's sort of why we're having this discussion. The two sides, in very broadly sense, and it's more nuanced than what's here, so this is just a general opinion. Ban mining either through zoning or otherwise, ban metallic mining either through zoning or otherwise, make adjustments to the current office ordinances, don't change anything. That's, that's what y'all are having to think about, and I think that pretty well in broad sense is what you're thinking about. The arguments in supporting the various positions, mining, metallic mining is harmful, dangerous, and should be, not allowed in any version, further controlled by regulations, it can be appropriately regulated, mining is of economic importance to the county. Those are the factors that you've got to think about as you decide what you want to do. All right, so who's really in charge? You get to make a decision about how you want to decide who's in charge. I'm going to tell you, in my opinion, the state is really in control. It authorizes what can be done, and it's chosen to license and permit mining in Virginia. It's authorized the county to do things through zoning. In addition, there is a statute that specifically relates to mining, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later, 45.2-1227, written totally in the negative, which drives me crazy, that says, any locality may establish standards and adopt regulations dealing with the same subjects dealt with in this chapter, so long as those such standards and regulations are no less stringent than those adopted by the director. And we'll see later on, there's some caveats added to that, where the director has, can by waiver make some of this not apply to localities. So what can the counties do? In my position, it's limited. I'm going to bore you a few minutes to talk about the local government. Just, oh, and processing, that's where I got there. Each county in the state of Virginia was created by the legislature, by the General Assembly, all right? And a little law says, court law says, several counties, like county organizations and county offices, exist only by the virtue of the Constitution and laws of the state. So Buckingham exists because the General Assembly, General Assembly says, there's going to be a Buckingham County, all right? The creation of counties is purely a legislative function. If they hadn't have said there's going to be a Buckingham County, there wouldn't be a Buckingham County. All right, so that's how the county gets created, but it goes a little bit further than that. You want a little history? We were created in 1761, if you've read the signs. In 1778, a little small triangular section got cut off of Buckingham and given to Cumberland. If you've ever looked at the map, the eastern line, that used to be a straight line. If you notice, when you get up to the James River, it bends to the west. That little piece, the legislature said, Cumberland, you can have that. And so that's why that map looks a little different. You see that little corner up inside? That was a little tweak that the General Assembly made sometime not long after 1761. They've done a few other little things around the county and adjusting boundaries, but that's the General Assembly's ground. You turn to the Virginia Constitution. General Assembly may provide by general law or special act that any county, may exercise any of its powers or perform any of the functions, and may participate, within or without the Commonwealth, may provide by general law or special act for transfer or sharing the regional government's services. So this is the grant that says, what you got is going to be what the General Assembly generally gives you. That's known as Dillon's Rule. Dillon's Rule provides that local government bodies only have the powers the General Assembly provides, either expressly or necessarily by implication. Supreme Court stated, it is applicable to determine in the first instances from express words or by implication. If the power cannot be found, then the inquiry is at an end. All reasonable doubt over whether the legislature, legislative authority exists must be resolved against the local governing body. That's a pretty strong statement. If you can't find something that says you've got the power to do it, you really don't have the authority to do it under Dillon's Rule. As to the challenge, you don't get the presumption that you were politically correct in making those decisions. In the Code of Virginia, in section 1-248, the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Commonwealth shall be supreme. Any ordinance, resolution, bylaw, rule, regulation, or order of any governing body or any corporation, board, or number of persons shall not be inconsistent with the Constitution and the laws of the United States or of the Commonwealth. It's called the supremacy clause. It establishes a pecking order, and in terms of federal government, state locality, we are not the high man on, on the pecking order. State law may also be blocked by local authority in three, three ways. They talk about, oops, sorry. Trying to see if I'm, doesn't want to play with me. That's a little, there, there are some other things in there, preemption, and that's the Attorney General's opinion, and he really says, you, you've got some limitations. All right, now, the areas that the Virginia Assembly has given localities to regulate sighting of the location of businesses is through zoning. In an opinion given by the Attorney General, he says, in his estimation, the adoption of a zoning ordinance is the only method permitted by the General Assembly authorizing a locality to generally control the location of undesirable industries or businesses within a locality. So zoning is your tool to decide where businesses operate or don't operate in your county. You go back to that thing we talked about earlier, you have the right in particular areas to prohibit, regulate, or otherwise mining in those zones. So what about this 15.1-1200? If you just go in and read this section, you say, wow, here it is. We can do whatever we want to. Any county may adopt such measures as it deems expedient to secure and promote the health, safety, and general welfare. Such powers shall include, and you go through those, and you say, well, there it is. We can do about anything we want to, as long as it's tied to promote the health, safety, and general welfare. But if you remember from that earlier discussion, General Assembly may provide by general law or special power, you got to do that. If you remember the supremacy part, you got to be in order with that. So you can't just do anything you want to. It can't go beyond or be in conflict with what the state and the feds say you can do. So when you first look at 15.2-1200, it is not as, quite as empowering as it appears. Those of you that remember the solid waste discussion a few years ago, immediately attempted to block the application of biosolids, and they got taken on, this was prior to the present biosolids law, and the court said, as we have clearly and repeatedly stated, a local government may not forbid what the legislature has expressly licensed, authorized, or required. A local ordinance may not conflict with state law. So we can't use 15.2-1200 to expand the county's role when the state has authorized the county to do it, or the state has already taken the area to itself. That's called preempt the ability of the locality to, to deal with it. So what did the legislature intend to give you with that? Improve the public health? And also, it talked about that the need for mineral resources and the need of agricultural, industrial businesses be recognized in future growth. So the General Assembly is saying to you in your zoning ordinance, these are the things you need to think about, and included in that is in mineral resources. You thought about that and talked about it in your comprehensive plan when it was adopted in 2000, I guess that was adopted in either 14 or 15. Again, to repeat that 2280 there, your, your, four is the one that becomes appropriate here. It may regulate, restrict, permit, prohibit, or determine the following. And so you have the authority in your zoning ordinance to describe and decide the areas in which you want those things to happen, all right? And that's what you've done. Your current ordinance does that. You say in A1, if they want to mine, they need a special use permit. If they want to mine in light industrial, they need a special use permit. If they want to mine in heavy industrial, they don't have to come talk to us. Go ahead, and as long as you comply with the state and federal people, you can do That's a whole lot of words. Take some time if you really worry about it to read it later on. But it really talks about to encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment and enlarge the tax base to provide for the preservation of agricultural, forestal lands, and other lands of significance. I've sort of highlighted some of the things that pertain to us. That's what you can do with your zoning. That's what you want in your comprehensive plan. If you want to change something, it's a sort of direct way your zoning so it'll match up. All right, so what do you need to consider in drawing these districts that you're authorized to do, where you can put these businesses? There are some standards that the state says you've got to follow. Zoning ordinance in districts shall be drawn and applied with reasonable consideration for existing use and character of property, the contingency plan, the suitability of the property for the various uses, the encouragement of the most appropriate use of the land throughout the locality. So in those districts you established, you've got some very clear guidelines of the types of things that you need to be aware of as you draw those. And other part is 2282. All zoning regulations shall be uniform for each class and kind of building and use throughout that district, but the regulation in one district can be different from the regulation in another district. So that means, and let's use M2, that's easy, is one, heavy industrial. Everything, mining's pretty consistent there. You can say any type of mining can go. The concern I get in, and I'll talk about it very briefly later, if you come and begin to try to separate out types of mining within those districts, then have you, do you have uniformity in the district? In other words, it, it's subtle in some ways, but we, is silver mining, is that different from another type of mining? And if you say special requirements for this one, special requirements for that one, not then for these? That may, you may run into the uniformity in the district in trying to do that type of operation. You've got wide discretion. You'll get some backing as you decide what to do with it, but if you go with an irrational classification as to the uses, it's not permitted. That'll, in other words, if you need, if, whatever direction you need, you need to justify that pretty clear while you're moving in that direction, and make that part of the record. If you get it wrong on unconstitutional grounds, you might have a problem. All right, what other tools did the legislature offer us? You, and the comprehensive plan that we've already talked about. All right, every locality by resolution has got to have a planning commission, and what is your purpose? In order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environs, and accomplishing the objective of that 15.2-2200, the local planning commission shall serve primarily as an advisory capacity to the governing body. So you play a pretty important role in this. The notion is that you are the providing advice, just like when you listen to your mom and dad and they gave you advice, sometimes you took it, and sometimes you didn't. And from a legal perspective, that's the way it is, the board of supervisors. You all try to be on the same page, but you don't necessarily always end up on the same page. Local planning commission shall prepare this comprehensive plan you're talking about. And the comprehensive plan shall be general in nature, and it shall designate the general or approximate location, characters, and extent of such features, roads, improvements, transportation, da, da, da. That plan is going to take on more importance this year than it ever has, okay? Because you're really saying what we believe needs to happen in areas of the county as we go forward. Circle back around that, that's dealing with transportation more than anything else. But the, you got to have the maps that he talked about, the designation of areas for various types of public and private development, and residential, including restricted housing, business, industrial, agricultural, those are the areas you got are addressed. The only thing I'm trying to give you here is a notion, is that comprehensive plan is important, and the amendment part is really what you're going through now, or what you need to decide, because if you decide to recommend some action on this situation, depending on how far you go with that, my estimation is you're also going to need to amend your comprehensive plan, because you're, right now, your comprehensive plan stands in support of a certain types of things happening in certain areas, and if you decide to change that, you'll be in conflict with your comprehensive plan. And if you remember earlier, we said that you got to do this zoning thing inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. Same type pitch. Here's the part that you, really gives you a pretty good control, special use permit. Again, I won't read it to you, but you may include, among other things, reasonable regulations and provisions as to any and all of the following matters, and if you go through those, you'll find, some of them deal with environment, some of them deal with other things. Doesn't mean you say, there are limits on that, but it does give you a way to put in some special conditions. Now, there's one other statute that I've found that really specifically deals with mining, and that's 45.2-1227. And it says, local standards and regulations, waiver of the application of the chapter, review for strict compliance. The A part is what you jump on first. Any locality may establish standards and adopt regulations of dealing with the same subject dealt with in da, 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 this chapter, which I say down there, Chapter 12, deals with permits for certain mining operations or reclamation of land. But they can't be more, less stringent than the state. But then they go on and B and C to talk about the directive waiver can have some impact on that. I can't find but where one case that's been challenged, and it got resolved in a different way, in Chesapeake. Chesapeake, this was a whoring operation, if I remember correctly, that type of operation, not the mining. The city had some regulations about the standards of that. The person who was running that mine had run into some argument with the state, and they had entered into a settlement agreement with the state, and they were arguing that the director by entering into this settlement with them had effectively said, City of Chesapeake, you can't enforce that because there is that waiver that's talked about in there. So depending on what the reaction to the state might be, you might put something in place, and then there might be a discussion, well, the director of mining's not going to deal with that. So what's the takeaway from all this? And I know I've thrown it at you fast. The takeaway, the county is given authority through zoning. That zoning must be done within the parameters of the authorization of the state, and the zoning must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And the state is also giving the 45.2 section. All right, with that in mind, let's pivot to the prove it first ordinance, which has been quite a topic of discussion. Got me named as right is wrong, and I appreciate that. I think it's sort of, I like it. But I still stand by my correct statement as I see it, the wrong statement as they see it. I gave the board an opinion last August, says the county was the legal authority to adopt that ordinance. It's the only matter that I've expressed a formal opinion on. I've listened to the discussion very carefully, but I've not advised as any other opinion, and I'm not really doing that tonight. I am telling you what I think the, sort of the out-of-bounds lines are and where they are. I've not changed my mind on the prove it first ordinance. You know, it's always interesting when you get something that's put in front of this board, or the planning commission, or some group, you like to know where it came from. So I spent a little time really looking at the genesis of this concept. This concept is broader than just mining in Buckingham County. It really comes out of a larger community group on community issues. on community issues. A, if there's a do it yourself guide, uh, 2019, it really puts forward on local issues in areas you need to do four things. Uh, they described the four problems at least. One of them is stealing peremption. If you talk to, if you remember that, that's federal, state, local, you gotta challenge that. Dillon's rule is an inhibitor in their estimation. The dormant commerce clause and contract clause, the courts have developed a legal doctrine called the dormant commerce clause, which says that sometimes Congress has exclusive power to regulate commerce, and the state and local governments may not discriminate against the commerce from other states. Has some implication here. And finally, this group takes on corporate personhood. They believe that corporations should not be treated as people, that they should not have the same rights as individuals. And out of that same do it yourself, the big four legal doctrines talked about, mentioned above, trapped you and your community in a box that you are allowed to demand as a community activist. The community rights strategy of activism developed out of recognizing how and many conventional forms of community activism that appeal to the government. Here's how big four are applied to restrict the rights of you and your community. They recognize that they are rowing upstream. Now, I, you know, I'm a great believer, you take what you got and you argue for it. So if they found this as a way to argue for it, you know, I understand that. And intellectually, I'm in favor of it. But when it comes to the application and the adoption of it, I have a problem with it. I'm not going to put you on the spot and ask you to raise your hand if you've actually read it. Okay? I know some of you have. I don't know how many of you have. But I want to make sure it's in front of you tonight. Want to make sure you, and I won't read it to you. But they say to protect the health safety. If you go back to the 15.2, maybe that sounds pretty good. They talk about the name. Read where they get the authority for. Every one of those are great documents, but they have nothing to do with the ability of the county to adopt this ordinance. That's a political statement, as one of my friends who's an attorney said. That's a nice political statement. Okay. But it's not legal authority. Let me put it back to the right side. So I'm gonna move on and go through, in this case, two slide presentations. The finding and its purposes. Read what you would be finding if you recommend the adoption of this. I don't think you're ready to make those findings. There's accusations that the county is not taking care of its citizens. Now, again, maybe that's a political statement, but there's not enough information in your record to recommend the adoption of that if you were even so inclined and thought you had the authority. Interpretation. All right. And they go through the definitions, and you can read those. It's, goes on, but there is statements of law rights, the right to self-government, all residents, again, more of a political statement. At what level? True. But there is a hierarchy of our right to self-government. The one that, uh, you know, those are nice things. I'm not opposing concept to any of them. Administration, civil rights enforcement. They don't set forth a penalty in there, which they said to the extent authorized by law, but it's not uh, effective date, people's rights to self-government. While the sentiment can be appreciated, the legality of putting it in an ordinance like this doesn't belong in there. It's a political statement and not a statement of what the policy of the county is and what it chooses to enforce. There's one section in here, for example, in dealing with corporations. Anybody who aids and abets a corporation in trying to do metallic mining is subject to a penalty. So if you own a piece of land and you want to have that explored and possibly enter into a contract with a corporation to mine your land, you'd probably be in violation of this too. So I just legally do not believe the county has the authority to adopt this. So I would ask, it is the only thing that I've given an opinion on because I was asked specifically about it. I do not believe this planning commission should recommend to the board to adopt that because, in the form, because I don't think they have the authority to do it. There are other ways that you might can accomplish some of that, but it's not through that ordinance. All right. Uh, what about the timing? Let's think about where we are. You got a comprehensive plan coming along. And here's the other part of this. Timing right there is not an immediate crisis as to finding a solution. The state has time to react. The county needs time to react for the comprehensive plan appropriate on any ordinance changes. Now, why do I say it's not an immediate crisis? If you know that state report, spend some time with the 280 some pages. And you will find first in the executive session, the gold prospecting activity has taken place in Buckingham County. It is not at all a certainty that gold mining will be proposed. That's on page one of the file report. Followed the formal Earl when he interviewed Ashton Bay. They said, we're still looking. We don't know. Part that I really like about that report is the, what the scientific community added at the end. That's where the technical discussions occur. That's where you really get into it and they make distinctions of the type of mining that might occur here compared to the type of mining that occurred in South Carolina. They said the type of mining that may occur here is more akin to what might happen in Alaska in a certain property up there, that it will not be a certain type of mining that you see the necessary, some of the pictures of that happened in South Carolina. But even that executive summary after, they said that when you get down into the, what's attached to it is called publication copy attached to the final report, given that no new gold mines are currently proposed in Virginia, and that there are several more years of exploration and development would be necessary before a mine could be proposed, there is ample time for Virginia General Assembly and state agencies to consider the conclusion and recommendations reached by both the National Academies Committee and the State Agency Committee before the state need to evaluate any applications. So it says, and what we're talking about now is a right for a piece down the road. So we don't have to make a decision tonight and probably not even next week. Because they're saying, the academic people are saying, there is time for the state to react to it. And notice they talk about action by the state. They don't talk about action by localities. What you're being asked to do is sort of a backstop, an indirect backstop. In other words, if the state doesn't take care of it, don't allow it to happen at all in the county. But it's, it's a little early to know what the state's gonna do, if they're gonna do anything. And I don't mean to be presumptuous. There are a couple of things that from staff's perspective that I believe you need to be thinking about. First, do you want, need any more information at this particular time? You've heard from the community. You've heard from individuals. You've heard from private groups. You've heard from business and industry. Is there anything else that we should be looking for to try to get in front of you? I have met with some people. I got a meeting scheduled Thursday, I think it is, with another group of people, just to hear the types of information that might be out there depending on which way you pivot with what you think you might want to do. But that's the first thing that sort of, that I have in my mind. Really, do you need to hear anything? Do you want to hear anything else? Or are you to the point where you're ready to begin whatever type of deliberation, discussion to make your recommendation to the state? You got that state report. If you really, even more tedious than this, spend a few hours with that. It's fascinating, really. And I commend it to you. Other thing I think you need to be thinking about is how do you integrate the path forward with your change in your comprehensive plan, which is now under revision? Do you go ahead and amend independently if you want to do something? Do you go ahead and amend your current comprehensive plan knowing you got another one coming shortly that you gotta deal with? So that's something you've got to decide in your discussions. All right. Once you sort of get past that, what's your, gonna be your recommendation to the board of supervisors? I want to talk a minute before we get to that. There is this, I think they were asking you for a recommendation. You weren't asked to consider a particular project or a particular word. Normally, the deal is if you refer something to the planning commission, they have X number of days, which is 100. But thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, the, I don't think the board is in that notion. They're looking for you to make some guidance recommendation to them, and then they'll see where they go from that. So I don't think you're stuck on a timeframe in this situation. I feel pretty comfortable about saying that to you. So what are the possibilities? Again, these are high vision, I mean, high altitude. And I don't mean to be presumptuous, but I think somewhere in this, you're gonna have to make some decision along these lines. And I'm, and there's no hierarchy. There's no magic in the numbers. Obviously, the default position would be nothing, do nothing, which would or either take great action down on the other end. So you can either say, no changes are needed. Let's wait till we take action, till we get through this comprehensive plan. Let's amend the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan immediately. What changes to the comprehensive plan? What to the ordinance? Take action to require the state of Virginia to develop more appropriate regulations, criteria for metal gold mining. That would mean the board would adopt a resolution, say, hey, state, you read the same report. We did. Take a look at it. You gotta do something. So, but I think somewhere that, those are the choices that you're gonna have to make. Now, I'm standing in front of you as your attorney, as the county attorney. Tell you my legal concerns. I really need to know the specific of what you might want to do before I can give you any detailed response. But if you treat the various types of mining differently in the same zone, remember that uniformity? That creates a problem, I believe. You can probably make distinctions in zones. Some discussion of whether you want to do an overlay zone and that type of stuff. But I think I would stay to the side of keeping the various types of mining the same, in the same zone, differently in different zones. If you take broad action and don't amend the comprehensive plan, I think you got a problem. In other words, if you institute some real large changes in terms of the mining and what we've got, and don't adjust your comprehensive plan, either immediately or wait until we get through the, before you take action. And if you remember, that report says, there's no urgency to this right now. There's a few years before we'll get even to the point where the state would have to consider an application. And it may be that Ashton Bay decides, yeah, Buckingham's not the place for us because it's not a, not enough product for us to get it to the ground. If you ban, if you adopt something that says ban mining entirely, I think you got a real problem. Okay. And the other one that's dear to my heart is the prove it first ordinance. If you adopt that ordinance in the form sent, that's your possibility. All right. That's my fast approach, bullet points, not trying to be too long, but I will try to answer questions. But understand hypotheticals get to be difficult because they're driven by so many different facts. Uh, but general questions, I think we can talk about.
Okay. Commissioners, any have questions at this time for Mr. Wright?
Just to you, Mr. Wright, I, I would understand specifically that we have no civil rights authority on this commission. So a prove it first ordinance from us, recommendation or not, is not our purview. Am I right?
I disagree with you.
So why would we even consider making that recommendation?
Well, it's part of that ordinance. So, you know, that's up to, I'm telling you that I, I don't think the ordinance is presented stands legal challenge. And so if, if there are parts of it that you like it, don't like or otherwise, and that's one of them that you have that opinion on, I don't disagree with you.
Second question. You mentioned to me at one time that there's a difference between the active mining and the processing of the finds that come out of the mine, the product comes out of the mine. If, if I read the ordinances the way they are, if I read the state code the way it is, it seems to me, regulation could include, even though it may not exceed what the state government allows, that could include our discussion with regard to the processes in order to refine whatever the product is that comes out of the ground. Could you discuss that?
It's an interesting thing. If you read the report made by the state in the academic part, they say it's probably likely that the, what comes out of the ground here will not ultimately be processed here. They think infrastructures already exist, and it's easier to take this product and carry it someplace else to have it finally processed. Now, that's not saying there won't be disturbance of ground, there won't be crushing mills, but that report does, does not definitively say that the extraction of gold will happen on site in Buckingham County. All right. So in terms of mining, that's a process that the state regulates. The other thing that gets to be interesting, if you, if you go broadly into mining, and we've heard arguments about the tailing mines, that the, the tailings out of the mines that existed and dealing with those, that is currently regulated by the state under the same deal that the gold mining. So it's awfully hard to distinguish those out. And the academic people suggest that some of those tailings are probably more volatile in terms of the exposing the community to, but any other chemicals and otherwise, without proper regulation. I think the inference is, if you think that can be done successfully, which is being done successfully in Gooseland probably right now because there's enough gold left in those tailings to get muddy out, the implication is if that can be done safely, the processes and the bad things are there are not as bad as the things that might come of a new gold mine. So you can focus on different parts of it. Yes.
So we could conceivably talk, with regard to the mining itself, we could talk to the processing of the ore that comes out of the ground. In other words, we could do in a zoning ordinance, something that would, as an example, prevent the use of heavy metals. I'm asking the question, not making a statement.
As I said, I'm not prepared to answer that question. Okay. Uh, if you give me a specific of what ordinance you think you might recommend and how you want to do that, or tell me to develop or think about that, I can come back and talk to you about that. But to tell you a good definitive answer to that, I would only either embarrass myself later or look like a hero later on. So.
And speak to him.
I am. I'm a hearing idiot. I can hear it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners at this time?
Only question I've got is, can I get this report that you just made up?
I mean, I'll, yeah.
So I have something to read?
No magic there either. I want to say, and I want to say to the commission that I appreciate very much y'all listening to me and that. But I also want to say to the commission that I appreciate, I've had interaction with, with a pretty wide variety of people at this, and I appreciate their input. It helps me think about how some of these things apply to that. I've not had a meeting with anybody, the people were most courteous and considered the way they presented themselves in the conversations we had. And, and I heard somebody talk about being Buckingham proud at the board of supervisors. And that is Buckingham proud when we conduct ourselves away in spite of our differences, that we have a discussion and shake hands at the end of the day. And with appreciation to you, the board of supervisors.
Okay. Mr. Wright, I appreciate you giving us our presentation. And I would like to also, if you, can you email that?
We can email it. I'll make, I'll give it to the recorder. The records will be part of that. And then we'll get your copy of it with the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That brings us to commission matters and concerns. I'm gonna suggest that we, we've had a lot of information provided to us. We have a meeting next week, regular meeting. Why not take some time, think about all the information that's been provided. At the end of next week's regular meeting, we can take a few minutes. At the end of next week's regular meeting, we can take a few minutes and decide if we need to hear some other speakers, if you prefer that, to get some other information, if that's the case, we'll do it. I think our next step would be to do that and decide on a work session to continue this, so.
I'm going to agree with you, sir, but I would also like to take it to the next step with regard to Mr. Wright's recommendation, that he takes a look and determines whether or not we could include or create an ordinance that dealt just with the process of the fines. Can you, would you, requesting or?
Oh, absolutely, I'm assuming.
I think if we do that and then have the meeting at our regular commission meeting, I think that'd be very helpful.
But anyway, that, you'd be thinking only if you want to entertain some other speakers at a work session, also when you may have a work session. We are, 20th, right, so we're already scheduled. So we can, you know, if you choose that you want some more speakers, we certainly have them there, and we'll, but we'll dive in this a little harder, and that'll give us plenty of time to go over what was been provided to us.
Ms. Edmondson, is there going to be any other issues on the, I mean, what have you got on the agenda so far for, for the 20th, or for next week?
Next week's regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, there will be a public hearing regarding the zoning text amendment and S U P, and there will also be an introduction for a cell tower.
Any other commissioners have anything they want to force at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned, thank you.